Chooses who to use as doctor.
Um, are AP classes available for all grades or is it just like upperclassmen?
Um, we have, I would say sophomore year really. In theory, a student on an advanced math or English track can come in the freshman year and take it. AP class. We do have students from neighboring middle schools, sixth and seventh graders taking geometry at our high school right now. So when they matriculate into the high school, it's quite possible that they're taking an AP precal or AP calculus course. So yeah, it's. I do the double take when I walk by them in the hallway. Like, tell me, tell me about your program studies and they're, 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 they're very, and they're fun.
But there's a real strong effort that eighth graders in Concord are exposed to Algebra I so that they can move to the high school there. Again, we have some of them going over to the high school now from the middle school, but as Tim said. But we also push hard on eighth graders so that when they go to the high school, they can, they can jump right into geometry. And so that gives them a little leg up as and get four years of math in high level math, which obviously is to their advantage.
Um, so this is, this was from last, this is the graduating class.
This is the graduating class twenty twenty three's data.
Oh, this past year's?
Yep.
Senior graduating seniors?
Yep.
This year, this time, right?
Uh, no, this would be the, this would be their AP classes throughout their call, the high school.
Here, all the graduating.
So this fourteen is only for one class?
Yep, yep.
Okay. It's not for all of the students we sent, right?
Yeah, of the graduating class twenty twenty three, there's approximately forty one Deerfield students, fourteen of them. Or fourteen seats in AP classes were Deerfield students.
But that's an interesting point because maybe when we give your report next year, we include the sophomores and juniors that are taking APs.
Yeah. Yeah, yep. So that you definitely could.
This class is through.
Yeah.
We can make it, I'll make a note that it'd be helpful to see the data of AP classes across all. Um, on page five, it is the CRTC data. Uh, now this is pro, the entire program. So you could have juniors, sophomores, and seniors in this data. So there's twenty eight Deerfield students who participate in a variety of CRTC programs we have to offer. Um, and, and that's across year one and year two. Right ahead.
Um, the students can't double up in one year. Like they can with AP, they can't double up and take multiple CRTC programs. It's like one student, one program, one year or is that not true?
I, I would never seen it done. I, I never say anything is not possible.
But, but the data though is most likely individual.
Yeah, oh, it is individual students. Yeah, it was, guarantees individual students. Any questions about CRTC, the programs offerings?
We're gonna, yeah, coming back. I understand we have, we're gonna do a presentation. I think it's the sixty.
Yeah.
And we appreciate that opportunity. Um, and so we'll give you a little bit more definition about what's happening at CRTC. Cause it's, uh, we're up to like seven hundred and six, sixty kids. Yeah, and so, um, right now we're in the. We have nine towns, nine districts that send kids to us. Um, and, um, right now we're in, um, our planning for the future. Cause we know it's just, it's just, it's a robust program. It's the best way to put it. And, um, you know, these kids really enjoy the programs. And, you know, I'm not surprised to hear you say, should we double up on it, right? Because they, they do love it and the opportunities are, you know, major in terms of selection.
Probably a comment.
I just, yeah. So, um, in regards to programming for CRTC, uh, the aviation.
I, I got the information. Um, I, I got. That's a good thing, especially with the Concord Airport here. The issue we have right now is, um, a site, a place to do it. I mean, we don't have that spot at the high school where, where, you know, we're really.
Get rid of the math class.
I don't know if I can do that.
You're always, you know, you bring up a, both of you bring up a great point. We keep expanding the high school, uh, programs are expanding, um, uh, and as well as our CRTC. And what we have done is we started agreements with schools such as NHI, New England College, Southern New Hampshire, UNH. And we're having during school hours, students either going to a local campus and participating in programs such as that. Or, or after school hours or even during our school day, we're open to if we have the space for them. They're coming on our campus and teaching courses such as that. And, um, you know, we, we continue to look at how we can expand our, our computer programming, cybersecurity, um. Aerospace, that's a new one, but you see that, hey, something you got it. But, but you know what? We have a student who's interested. We haven't, we'll, we'll chase it down, see how we can make it happen. We have yellow opportunities too, so.
We try to stay on top of it, you know, like the, we have a welding program, as you know, it's pretty small. But we know what a demand is for it at the, at the base, um, over in Portsmouth, at the shipyard. You can't find people to do the welding and they have these incredible contracts, right? To repair the submarines over there. And so, um, you know, Ian's taught, Ian Follow the Principal has, um, has, wants to expand welding too. So there's some, you know, some basic things, but some other things like cybersecurity, um, building airplanes. So we, we got it all, I'll tell you.
Um, any other questions regarding CRTC?
Are, um, just cause I don't know really how it works. Are most of these programs like multiple years long or is it like one year?
You, you can, it's preferred that you do two years in the same program because you get industry recognized credentials and credits towards like a, uh, post-high school. But if you started off in health sciences and decided, you know what, I really prefer EMT and fire services. You, you can do those lateral steps. You'd have to take the year one and when you go on to the year two, you wouldn't get the full hours for that. But, um, but so that does happen. But for the most part, students, yeah, usually it take like, uh, you know, educational behavior science and stick with it for two.
And then can you join CRTC as a freshman or is that typically like a sophomore?
So. Sophomore is more common, but we do have, I'd say half a dozen freshmen who are currently in CRTC. They're the ones who come up with, uh, you know, uh, transferring credits from middle school. Maybe met their Algebra one requirement already have a year will language under their belt. Uh, so they have some of those general requirements that can, um, what's, what's, um, for, um. Fill their schedule taken care of and they go into a CRTC class. But there's only a few that's been on that, on that path.
So the twenty eight students is generally between our juniors and seniors?
Yeah.
So like if you're looking at proportionally, you wouldn't wanna compare it to the, the tie, the whole.
Whole school.
Cause there have been, there have been questions on how many students participate in CRTC or what percentage of students. So I'm just trying to figure out a good way to present that information.
We'd say about a third of the, uh, Deerfield students coming to Concord High School participate. And as we expand our program to AP, um, we have waiting lists in almost all our programs unfortunately. So that's, that comes back to, uh, space needs.
That is a good point to make because it's very easy to say it's twenty eight of our students.
Right.
One of the things that maybe in future reports for other boards, as I said here. Is if there's ways to put where it's practical, um, participation rates is just a percentage. So, you know, if you see R T C, thirty three percent of Deerfield students participate in CRTC. Or, um, there's another, really back at the S A T results, AP class is one percentage of Deerfield students. And are participating in AP class is one percentage participated at the SATs. Cause I, I know I am as well doing this, I'm kind of scratching through here, telling students, trying to figure out those rates anyway and say, okay. Ask the question I was gonna ask.
No, we can update some of that data. I mean, we have it. I can just send it, I'll send it over to Patty. Just to give you a little bit of a better idea. Yeah, no, that's a great point.
First, gonna shut the air off. Tell us if you get more. It's hard to hear.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the CRTC enrollment program? All right, um, down below, there's a caveat around class rank and GPA. So we have, um, explored because this, this class coming up is the first class to go all four years with the four point O scale. So we were doing a conversion behind the scenes, um, to calculate class rank and GPA. We did a couple, uh, community forums, virtual with families. We polled students and we put out a, a, um, form to families to get feedback. And we were talking about how when we were doing the conversion, we would have to go out to the thousandth or in some case, uh, case of ten thousands place to determine who was first and who was second. Um, so when we did this presentation, we, and the feedback we got was a valedictorian, valedictorian salutatorians a valued thing in the Concord community. So we will go out to the thousandth and ten thousands place to still have those tall ranks. But we will be having designations of summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and cum laude at our graduation ceremonies. Because it incorporates the, the stu, the, the number twentieth student. If you come into the hundreds place was in the same ranking as number three. It, just as you go out, they, they, uh, into the further decimal points that we, that's where you get the distinguishing there. And we don't wanna say, you know, the kid who had a thousandth point is so much better than the kid who had, you know, that was behind that. So, um, we will be moving that direction. Uh, we, there's more details to come. Uh, we, we're gonna have some more conversation on how we do these recognition, recognitions and distinctions. And we'll be sharing that out and you guys will be given that information as well.
Thank you.
Does this say that this, these numbers are from the class of twenty twenty?
On, on the ranking, you flip over the next page, the ranking, it shows you the forty one students who graduated last year in the twenty twenty three class? Those are, those are where they ranked amongst a class of three hundred and six graduating seniors?
Do you have, and again, I've, I've heard this from people in town, I didn't validate it. But where they heard there was losing students or where students are missing? Do you, you guys don't happen to track up, honestly, we probably have the data as well, but dropout rate, as it would apply to Deerfield students?
We, we track as it applies to any student enrolled at Concord High School, but we can break it down in Deerfield, yeah.
But that might be something that would be future help for us to see. Cause I think, again, the data gets mistranslated sometimes.
So in, in to clarify, what's, from my understanding, identifier would dropout rate. It means to you, so with the state, any student who doesn't graduate four years from Concord High School, attends adult diploma program or takes the high set and successfully completes it, is a dropout. So is that, is that a dropout?
No, yeah, it's awful.
So, so when you want. You, you heard me. So if you don't graduate Concord High School, what, what they do is they say it's, they give you your graduation rate. And it counts against you. They don't do dropout rate, you do graduation rate. So what they say is if you take longer than the four years to graduate at Concord High School, it, it counts against you. So if I put you in a robust, you know, work-based learning experience through an ADP program and you graduate in four and a half, you count against you. So when I ask, do you want the, specifically the students who have dropped out, are not engaging in any of our programs? Or do you want the, the numbers of the kids who are taking more than five years to graduate or do you want?
No, I want the kids that are.
I want the kid.
That are disengaged.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, uh, you know what, I'll give you all the numbers and I'll define what they mean.
Yeah, I guess in my head, that's what, when I say dropout, I.
But that's very helpful context because I think people look at the state information and say, you know, CHS has a whatever.
Well, it's, it's, I think they call it the unaccounted board that you have.
We, our school board, we report out every, um, every school board meeting, we report out an enrollment. And we talk about students who are not in March to graduate on time. And I think last year they, they were worried because it was thirty two and that's hot. Um, but when we broke it down, out of the thirty two, only two were, what you, what you would identify as a dropout. And the other thirty were at other programs. It's just the way it's reported out. Uh, it's kids who don't finish in five years.
Got it. Yeah, it'd be helpful to have the numbers and then a little explanation, maybe. It would be very helpful.
Yeah, and there's more than just the adult diploma and more than the high set programs where these kids are. And it's counted as a dropout. So we're gonna list those programs that the youngsters are participating in active participation. It's not like they're just gone.
Right.
Right.
And I know you're looking for the just gone, but we'll share with you all of the places where the kids are. Um, because we, you know, we got questioned on that too, right? Then we did, you know, we did a research in making sure where all those youngsters were so that we could account for them.
Um, and, um, the next page, it's performance of freshman sophomore level math courses. Um, spoiler alert, our math scores as a district are below, uh, state average, not far below, but they are below. Um, and we have put in more efforts this year to align our curriculum uh, from elementary school to middle school, from middle school to Concord High School. And we designated administrator new position at Concord High School to focus on curriculum instruction and assessment. Um, we gave it a fancy title, Assistant Principal of Student Faculty Life. But, uh, yeah, it's pretty, um, but the, the, the focus is to improve on learn, student learning. And math is a huge area of focus for us. We've done some, um, really, um, unique things with our schedule this year to ensure that all math teachers have the same common planning time. So we can really dig into our common assessments, make sure we're aligning with the common core standards, look at our scope and sequence. Um, and what's coming out of it is some really good questions. Does the traditional pathway through math courses really, um, you know, is it, is it appropriate? Students are being evaluated on the SAT and their math is expected to be proficient in Algebra two. But they're being evaluated in early March. So they haven't even gotten to the complex, uh, uh, you know, problems and, and concepts of Algebra two, yet they're evaluated on it. So we, we've been having a lot of discussions around that and doing a lot of reflection on that. And I can just, all I can say is, uh, students coming into Concord High School in the next couple of years will have a, I think, a more robust math experience and opportunities in math. We, we've created new classes to engage them. Uh, it's, uh, sports statistics, statistical algebra. Um, we're, we're trying to show the application and of the skills you learn in these different courses and how they apply in real life situations, get that critical thinking. And at the same time, building that capacity for the test-taking things they're gonna encounter on SATs.
Got it.
Any questions around the math scores or? And the, I'll just add, the advanced geometry track can, uh, can be a freshman or sophomore. A student arrives to Concord High School already having successfully completed Algebra one and recommended by, um, their previous math teacher to try advanced geometry. They would be, uh, permitted to take or be allowed to enroll in the advanced geometry course or basic geometry course. So that gives you the breakdown across those levels.
It looks like it's saying that the grades nine and ten over eight years. Oh, they're different courses.
Will you?
Can I add up the numbers? I'm just getting like about one class with about four year.
Oh, so you look at the right-hand column, that's the Deerfield, the left-hand column is the Concord students. It's showing a comparison to Concord students.
Still only coming at seven, twelve, and twenty seven, it's still only gonna be your. The D-ish kids, it's not gonna be eight years of kids.
Uh, it'd be your sophomore and, um, should be your sophomore and freshman class. So, yeah, it does look like we're missing some numbers, yeah.
Or is that just last year's numbers or just the some, just the freshman?
Yeah, it might have been, it, it would make. It does look like it's, if I were to guess based on the class size, it is last year's, uh, ninth grade class. But it does say ninth and tenth up in the top. I'll go, go back and look at the report and I can give you ninth and tenth. Cause the, those, the, at least advanced geometry, geometry would have tenth graders.
Oh, I get, not all the tenth graders, just the tenth graders in these classes.
Yeah. On page nine, uh, it's the percentage of students in special education. And it, it gives you the breakdown in the size of the, uh, class coming into Concord High School. Um, and it gives you the number of students in, uh, receiving special education services or in programs. Um, and it gives you the incentive, how many students that represents in that class. I, and I will caveat, just so I can dive into the different programs we offer. But I did bring the program studies if you wanted, uh, some reading on what programs they offered in special. Any questions? Um, next page, um, is our breakdown world language. And so we, we have a pretty large world language department offering, uh, four Latin major languages, German, French, Spanish, and Latin. And this just is the breakdown of Deerfield students in, uh, across each level for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. So it could be freshman, sophomore, junior, senior.
So it looks like most Deerfield kids do like the first level, then maybe no, continue.
What are the languages they have in eighth grade?
Uh, complicated question.
We don't have public language anymore here.
Whatever, V LAX.
What? You don't have?
Yeah, we have not been able to fill that position. So we have a world cultures class this year.
Okay.
But you have students who have taken B LAX, French or Spanish B LAX.
That's good to know. I mean, they might go into the second level. That's, you know, that's what I'm thinking about.
My daughter went into French two.
Did she take?
She took B LAX.
Do you anticipate getting it back? Well, I guess that's a board decision. I shouldn't say that. It's important, you know, I feel the language is.
It would end up being on a cart, being padded out.
We, we would just, um, I just put out my newsletter, uh, to, to the community. Um, and just I, I had these did you know facts, you know, just kind of fun things. And, um, you know, we have, um, over thirty languages spoken in the city in Concord. And so, you know, it's great when the kids have exposure to different languages, you know, so. And so, you know, it's great when the kids have exposure to different languages, you know, so.
Can I just interrupt briefly? Is there anyone in the waiting room for the meeting?
We did have some trouble, um, we fixed it, and we have no trouble with the meeting.
I got, I just saw an email.
Um, we fixed that.
Got it, okay. Sorry, I just saw an email pop up, that's a more.
Yeah. Yeah. I always try to log on to make sure I can get in and people trouble shooting in.
Thank you.
Um, additionally on that page, it, it gives a, just a summary, uh, a couple sentences, as in our scholarships and awards, every year we give out, um, a couple hundred thousand dollars in, in scholarships and awards, and Deerfield students make, uh, senior Deerfield students make up ten percent of that, uh, of that, they receive ten percent of those scholarships. And then last, um, and I have a, a handout, again, I'll leave for the board afterwards, and welcome to take home with them, um. There'll be, uh, co-curricular programs, our athletics, clubs, theater, drama, chorus, band, marching band, jazz band. Um, all that stuff included, um, in the last year, total number of registrations for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, um, co-curric, programs in athletics, uh, where, uh, students either compete in a varsity sport or registered in a club where they can earn credit, there's thirty-seven students. And some, one of the things that I will say with the clubs, um, it's more of a fluid participation unless student declares they want credit and take it as an ELO. Um, so if you're in, uh, color guard or something, and you decide I wanna do it when I'm available, you may not receive the quarter credit, but you would still be part of that, so there could be students excluded from it, solely the students who declared they want a credit for the experience, the athletics is different from the clubs. And the last page just lists, it's not exhaustive, but the, uh, most heavily participating in clubs, we have at Concord High School.
Awesome. Great. So do you have any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming and giving this presentation, we really appreciate it.
And, and really finally, if there's other pieces of data that you'd like us to share and bring in, just so, how you'll send us a quick email or text, and we'll, we're happy to provide that.
Awesome.
That data is important to us too, so.
Great, and we will see you on the sixteen.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
You don't have anything for the kids after that?
No.
No deal?
Nope. It's a bait, I guess. Thank you, have a great night. Um, facilities updates.
Good evening. Um, three things, um, to cover tonight, uh, roof, we're almost done. Looking at this weekend, all we have left is the aluminum curbing that goes over the edge of the roof, that holds the rubber in place. Weather holds out, that'll be completed on Friday, and the roof will be one hundred percent. Time, yes, rain, we've had no rain leaks, so.
Great.
It's really nice.
Right.
That's why they're still there. Fire alarm system, uh, our last outstanding item from the original prints is the elevator recall, that's being fingers crossed, that's being installed on the nineteenth. We had some concern with the age of the elevator and adding newer updated technology to it, but our contractor Pine State Elevator, um, feels confident that it can be added. So RB Lewis and Pine State will be here next Wednesday, I think it is, um, to install that, and that'll close out that section of the fire alarm upgrade. Uh, bids went out for snow removal for this year. I think you guys have the, the information on that, we received two, I reached out to three local contractors, received two back. Um, one from East Coast Signal, another one from Blue Sky Landscaping. Uh, Blue Sky Landscaping for one year was thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, that does not include salting, which was requested in the proposal. He submitted an additional cost for salting at a price of six hundred dollars per treatment. East Coast Signal, their first year is nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, he does include salting in his bid. He's willing to try it out for this year, he feels that he's gonna get a lot of callbacks for additional salting on our new asphalt. I disagree, because the only place we needed to salt last year was on the sand. We didn't ask for repre, we did not request additional salt wherever else was existing asphalt. So I think with the sun, fresh asphalt, everything's gonna melt day after day after storm. So I really don't see that price being any more than nineteen-five, that's submitted. Uh, he also ran his bid out, both contractors ran their bid out, um, Blue Sky went from thirty-seven, eight for one year, second year, thirty-nine, six ninety, and then their third year is thirty-nine, six ninety. East Coast held their number at nineteen-five for season one, nineteen-five for season two, and two thousand for season three. Like, just as we go with East Coast Signal, and also that we lock him in for a three-year deal at those prices.
So I, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the, the email says East Coast does not carry the cost restraint salt, they'll come up with a cost over the contract.
Nope, I'm sorry, I misread that, I spoke with, um, I thought that included that, but he said his salting is included.
Okay.
It's just above and beyond what he's thinking we're gonna need because of the parking lot.
Yeah, no, so his, he wants it to stand on the board?
Nope, he's going with straight salt.
Okay. All right, it won't take much, so he's including that in his price?
Correct.
Okay, you confirm that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Do we, I don't know how this works with snow removal. Is there, you know, if we need, have to, have to have school open for whenever preschool starts, do we have assurances that, you know, they will sort of come to us first, before they go out and do their other?
So we've already had an issue with these.
We've been, we've, we've, we've posted those since twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and we've paid net. We, it's, um, it's a double good for us, he's right across the street, and he's the buyer too, so last thing he wants is a slip and fall to respond to, so. Double insurance policy for us, he's never let us down yet.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure the community, the road agent communicates with him, you know, when we do this whole thing, you know, back and forth.
Gotcha.
Um, so, oh, he knows if I'm going to be a two-hour delay, usually the road agent drives, drives that decision.
He has, I think he contracts a couple trucks out with the town as well.
Okay.
So these guys, these guys are already out building the town.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll move to a more.
Any discussion?
You said the three-year contract.
Yes.
That's what you asked for, my question.
What?
Three, three-year contract.
Three-year contract?
Um, any discussion? Trish, did you get that though, is, is that a can be, okay, sorry. Um, okay, all in favor?
I, hi.
Ward it.
Great. Um, that's all I have for tonight, is there any other questions, or?
I have a question, because we talked at the last meeting about putting solar removed and getting it.
Exactly.
Yep, I'm working, um, I'm trying to catch up with that, I've spoken, I met with Wes, uh, one time, I hope to reach back out to him. Um, I'd like to put in RFQ, a request for questions out to the, to following our basic guidelines for, um, RFP's request for proposals, cause I just don't want to, I don't wanna go too far out, so we're getting some company from Texas,
Yeah.
but I'd like to go New England-wide and see what we can draw from, from there, Vermont, Maine, Hampshire. Um, just to make sure we're getting the best possible equipment and pricing for that, so I hope to, I can report back at the next school board meeting with more information on that.
I'm just gonna PK you this.
Is it a layout of the solar panels?
No, it's, I think, some idea of what it would cost.
Oh, yep. Thank you.
Um, I think that it's all for you and Chris.
Fantastic.
Yeah, everything looks great, the parking lot, the roof looks great.
Thank you.
From Zach's aerial photos the other day, if you haven't seen those.
Orville, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, photo credit for the school pictures for my son, he's still snapping the pictures.
Thank you.
Uh, that was a week ago, right? Let me think, that's correct for this.
Okay. So we did snowplow it also already, okay, so review of correspondence. I don't remember how many emails there were. Um, so as always, these will be attached to the minutes for this, um, for this meeting, is there anything that anyone would like to discuss specifically about any of the emails received? Yes?
I just, I don't know, uh, this is more of, I guess, just kind of a, a generic statement, but the, we, the board keeps hearing that we haven't responded to the community, and we haven't done anything, and I think that's a a gross, disruptive representation of what's going on, a lot of the emails that we see reflects something similar as well. The difficult part for sometimes to get, so it's the board has to process, and, um, I just think it's important that the work occur, that needs to occur, and again, consistently the emails we get a lot, when our, to the tune of the board doesn't listen, represent what we want. And the, and the comments we get, and the reality of it is, is unfortunately, it takes time, and you have to allow it to occur.
Yeah. And I think, you know, to the extent the people have requested that we read every single email during a meeting, which to me seems like for some meetings would be an extremely long amount of time of reading the meetings that we're going to be attaching to the minutes. Um, but one of these emails is a good example of, you know, I saw this, and I said, this is an email from Leah McHugh, and she raised issues about my tea.
Right.
And audio, and I said, let's put that on the agenda, so we have to put it on the agenda. Um, so I think the the premise that we're not reading the emails and that we're just ignoring them is false. Um, I know that I read every single thing that comes in, and, you know, I, I take it to heart, if there's things that need to be acted on, I will add to the agenda, and if people specifically want to be added to the agenda, you know.
There's policy.
There's policy for that, so they are welcome to suggest it in the email, and I will take it into consideration when making the agenda.
I do have a question, we had this other letter with storage, and we had talked about possibly trying to sell stuff that we don't need in storage at the townwide yard sale, are we still moving on that, because I haven't even, I haven't even heard a date about your date.
Next week.
We are at sales Saturday, I'm saying.
This week, Saturday too.
Well, I was thinking on that one.
Yeah. We had, I mean, we had reached the.
Cause our ETA was a little bit, right?
Yeah, we reached out, but from what I understand, there wasn't like a whole lot of stuff that was really ready to move out, it sounds like, so. But I know, I, I think Nicole, you're, you're in contact about it too, quite a bit. Well, like the storage, and, not the storage, but like stuff for people, for stuff at the yard sale that needs to go.
I don't know if, anything that we can grab, but, I mean, Friday night or Saturday morning, if there was a pile of stuff you wanted me to put for sale, I would certainly grab it and move it out, huh?
I also, we have Brian, well, and staff have, have already done a pretty good job of decluttering is probably the best way to put it, it's purging, some old stuff out of the building and, and the shed, and every single year for the last nine years, I've encouraged the administration.
So they were pretty good shape now.
Um, I would say the majority of the stuff that comes out of the shed is not worth buying. Actually, and people might pay us just to keep it where it is. It's, uh, I, I try to do our best to make sure that the stuff that we do keep and to use again, and the stuff that we can't use is essentially either broken or has aged dramatically.
It's outside its life, but I know it's been encouraged every year to purge, and I've said, for there's, there's still stuff that could probably be dealt with out there, but teachers are pack rats.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. You never know when you're gonna use something.
Morically, there's a, I, I have to say, there's a box colored paper in my basement, that has been there for fifteen years, the entire time, no, one of them, I was teaching for close to twenty years. Our entire relationship, this box of paper has been in my basement, I've tried to throw it out a hundred and nine times, and it has had my own peril if I touch it, because you might need Fuchsia paper someday.
I mean, she might, I think that's right.
She should use it.
Um, so the.
You know what I'm talking about.
Specifically, this email from Leah, she requests, um, when revisiting the needs of storage, can there be some sort of retention policy? I don't personally think that's a, a real board decision, I mean, we I would defer to, to administration about the best way to handle that, I don't know that we are the best group to, to force you to do things.
I think other than technology, it's very difficult to put a replacement cycle on things, and we just use it, like Brian said, until it's, nobody possibly would want it.
Till we're a small off.
Um, you know, if a desk has a ten-year lifespan, we probably get twenty out of it, because I wouldn't wanna recycle things.
Well, when I first went to my job, there was nothing in my classroom, and there were tables that they were throwing out in the lobby, I'd like to go out and put my lunch there. I could get new tables.
Yeah, I mean, you just.
But if you need Fuchsia paper, come and we can help you.
Um, but, but, that is to say, if if you guys need help and need a dumpster or something, you know, we'd certainly be happy to help out that.
Well, and I think the other thought was, instead of things ending up in the landfill, doing a more environmentally responsible thing, but if people can use it. But if it's at a point where it's no longer usable, that's, yeah. Just to make that for clarification.
Okay, anything else related to correspondence? Okay, so we are on to high school updates, so unfortunately, we are still not voting tonight, um, I will share that the, we have drafted tuition agreements with Pembroke, Co-Round, and Concord, they are currently being reviewed by legal counsel. Um, you know, at this point, the board can't really talk about the content of those because they're still up for negotiation, so we send them out to the schools, the schools come, could come back and propose changes to everything, so you know, regardless of sort of what it looks like right now, you know, we will plan to vote on things once they are reviewed by counsel and they are approved, and the schools are ready to move forward. Um, and we will certainly, uh, announce when, when that is happening, if, if people want to attend.
I, I'd like to add that, um, we were having the Monday, next Monday night, we have three high schools coming to talk to the kids, so they can see all the different schools, if Pickwood Schools are interested. And, and the other thing is Dover High School has never gotten back, so Dover High School keeps coming up. Dover had, we have, we've contacted them several times, and they cannot get that to us, so that's why Dover is not a full travel town looking to us.
And there was a good question about Pembroke coming to a school board meeting, I don't think that's true.
No, no, I think he's, I think he's got it mixed up, I think he's thinking about the Monday night.
Yes.
I think that's what he's thinking, but it's all three schools.
All three schools are probably.
Yeah, right, so, Co-Round's coming.
What's the date to go?
The sixteenth. The sixteenth, so Monday, Monday, at, at six, it's five or nine, I don't remember.
Six, I think, maybe six.
So they.
I still remember.
What, what, what if, what if, um, just once we have actionable items that we can
Yes.
hold on, then we will do so.
Right, like, so.
Until then, we're in a, for.
Like theoretically, the board could say, we're gonna send all. Like theoretically, the board could say, we're gonna send all of our kids to ABC school for seven dollars a year. Let's vote on it, excellent. I mean, but that's, you know, if, if the other school doesn't actually agree to do that, then our voting on it is sort of useless. So we don't want to sort of present something that is not actually what would happen if we were to vote on it. So that is why, and unfortunately it's taking some time. I will also note that.
We, we have also, we've considered what the input has been and one of the reasons why it's taking time.
Correct. We, we revised a lot of things after the public, the public hearing. Um, I will also say that unfortunately, a lot of the other boards only meet once a month. So while we meet every two weeks and it seems like we don't have substantive updates, we're meeting twice as often as some of the other boards who need to consider the negotiations and consider, you know, what we are requesting of them, so.
And let's, um, talk about the, so the open, the night we had the middle school meeting. Brian and Heather and Greg did the whole presentation to the eighth grade. So our eighth grade families know that there will be some sort of choice. And so, you know, the question is asked about, you know, what, what are you gonna do with our eighth graders? We know what we're gonna do with them, they will have some sort of choice.
They know.
And they know as well, the, the eighth grade families know a presentation, that presentation is available on the, on the web, on the TCS website. And in addition to that, um, I know that there are some schools that have been, would, would be willing to come to an evening and do a presentation and some schools won't do that. Our students are going to Concord and Pembroke for a tour and Co Brown does something different. And so we've gave, given all the eighth grade families that information about what Co Brown is going to offer.
Thank you so much for your help with that.
Of course.
Yes, that's great.
Um, any, anything else from anyone about high school stuff? There's a lot going on.
You should be proud of yourselves. It's, it is a lot. You've worked hard for sure. And we appreciate your efforts.
We are trying to make it work for everybody, I hope. Okay, so we'll move on to audio visual for the board meetings. So we have gotten numerous complaints, including from our wonderful secretary. About, about how poor the audio quality is for our meetings. We also had some technical issues unfortunately, um, but I think we can mostly resolve the meetings with WebEx. But I do wanna discuss what we can do about audio. Because if, if we're doing this and we're having it available and it's something that the board cares about to have it recorded and available live, you know, in, during live, during the meetings, like, I think we need to figure out a way to fix the audio issues. So sort of open forum, if anyone has ideas or some, yeah. So, um, this is what he did, talked to our tech integrator and, and, you know, we kind of brainstormed some things. And somebody had mentioned YouTube, but you still have the same exact issues because YouTube's open on the computer or WebEx is open on the computer, whatever platform it is, is not the issue. So that, we have the camera, which is great, but there's no, we need microphones. The only way you're gonna solve this is to have microphones, so. And you can't just buy microphones and plug them into something. You, we, it's a little bit multi-professional and outside of our area of expertise, but we have used Tim Griffin for all of our audio visual. And if you're, if you want, we would be, uh, willing to reach out to him and just say, hey, we have this issue. Could you give us a quote? Can you come in and look at what we have and make some suggestions on how we can improve our system? The other issue that you're gonna have is if it's complex, you'll need someone to set it up and to be responsible for it.
Right.
Um, at, at each meeting. If it's something that, you know, it's a, Mr. Greve can figure out, just plug this in, we'll be okay. But if it's anything above and beyond that, we just need to make sure we have someone that controls shoot. I am anticipating a public comment later that why doesn't the board go to GBW? Because they have made an investment in audio visual, microphones, et cetera. So didn't know if people want to discuss that as a potential option.
Yes.
So we did at one point go to GBW back at the beginning of my tenure with a meeting.
We had to go for six, I forget why we went there.
We were meeting there for, we were there for a little while, but we decided ultimately that with staff wanting to be able to come in and out of meetings and everything else we had going on at that time, it was just better for us to be in our own house. And we certainly felt, we did it for, there was a number of meetings therefore, where we felt like we were outside of, we weren't in our house and we're a school board, we should be meeting inside the, inside the school. We should certainly be, you know, in our space where our staff can come in and out. We have access to all the resources we can bring.
And we, you know, we have, Mrs. Whitty can run and Mr. Greve can run everything in this school in terms of like if we need the projector, if we need to log into that, if we had issues with, um, the internet at first and then I think maybe they gave us the password to use that. I can't remember, it's been years ago now, but, you know, access to a copy or if we have to run and make copies for something, it's, you know, this is, like you said, this is our house. We have everything that.
And, I mean, from a legal standpoint, we don't have to have video and audio recording in the meetings. We have to have minutes. Now, that'd be part of the other, the other part of the thought process was, you know, we, our obligation is to provide minutes and all that stuff. If we can invest in a couple of microphones and talk to Tim or somebody and there's a way to add a little bit more capacity to that thing, fine, but as far as going back to GBW, I really do think the school board should be meeting at the school.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely, definitely sympathetic, um, to the staff who may come for part of it, may leave, may sit in their office until they're, we're ready for them to come in. So I don't disagree. I think I would like to explore, you know, what it might look like or if there's different options with him or whomever. Um, and then I guess we can make a decision on second person, second person step. Yeah.
See what you might say, if it's easy, it's easy there.
Right, if it's a few hundred dollars or something for microphones, then let's probably do it. What if it's, I know, you know, GBW spent thousands of dollars for their systems, so which.
We still have our own.
Right, well, right, yeah. And then I don't know that in this school year, we'll be able to just buy things, um.
I was just thinking it might be.
Yeah, right, so it really would be, we'd have to see. We'd have to see, but I am sympathetic to people who I think, you know, part of the reason I really like that we have it available is that a lot of people who care about our board meetings have children and they're homeless children and like this is probably bad time for people, it's dinner time. So I'm sympathetic to that. And of course, if it boosts engagement, then, um, I think that's a plus. Our tech, I mean, I will tell you, and it's, I don't know anything about this, but our tech folks at Humboldt Academy were, were able to figure something out. So for every board meeting, there's like a one shared microphone on each table, so two people share a microphone. They figure out how to plug them in, there is some contraption on the floor that everything plugs into. We still use the laptop for WebEx and then the camera. We have a, um, a stand for a microphone and the little cameras mounted on that and it works. So I'm sure Tim could come in and let us know how we can make that happen. Keep it simple for us.
Yeah, as, as simple as possible.
Yeah. All right. Great, does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Cool. Um, audit update. So this is a little bit update, um, outdated. I'm gonna get an update for the, um, full board if there is one, I, I don't know if there is. So the field work, um, for FY twenty one is finished for Allenstown, Chithis and Pembroke. Um, and just to refresh you for the process for auditing, they sent like thirty-nine pages worth of documents that they're gonna need to complete our audit for each fiscal year. So we have a Dropbox and we put all the reports in the, um, documents they request. We have them ready for them and then they have to come in and spend X amount of days doing field work, which includes all the auditing team randomly pulling things. So we send them lots of documents, but they have to come in and do field work. So they may, one time they have Amber blog into our bank account so that they could see the balance on the screen and see what we had submitted, just, it's like a, you know, check and balance to make sure everything is, um, randomly checked. Once they do that, they go back and they, it takes several weeks to finalize the report, the actual write-up. It's, you know, it's close to fifty days.
Fifty days, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a quick process. So all the field work is, um, generally complete for those three districts and we just need to finalize the reports. Deerfield fiscal year twenty one field work and Epsom, um, we have them the first two weeks of October so that they're now finishing up that field work. It did slow down a little bit because once the year, fiscal year's closed in all the school districts, all of their regular clients are expecting them to come back in, so they couldn't just devote all their time to us. So it had to get spread out a little bit. Um, and as they get caught up on year end for the other districts, they'll be able to jump back in with us, um, at a more regular schedule. So we have them for the first two weeks in October. We have them the weeks of November thirteenth, December fourth and December eighteenth. So that's a good chunk of time that we already have scheduled. Um, and then we've been pulling reports. Once you know what they're looking for, for the first year, you could just, we've got Dropbox set up for every fiscal year, for every district, so we can just keep populating those so that when they come, everything is ready to go. And that's what our consultant's been working on in our, um, accounting system for us, so. Um, and then we did update, uh, the two audits that were missing from the website are posted. Do we know about like fiscal year twenty two? No, I mean, they'll, you know, yeah. Um, I was hoping they would be done this school year. I'm not sure that they're gonna be able to pull that off. It's hard to know, everything, it's, it's easier now. Our consultant knows our accounting system, so that he's faster there. And our, after the, I think the fiscal year twenty year, everything is paperless. So every time Trish has an invoice, she scans it into the accounting system attached to the PO. So that when they come in and they want something, we're not going through a hundred boxes of filed paper. It's right in our accounting system, they can just pull it up, so. There are things that are making it go a little faster now, which is great. Got it. Sharon, have questions about the audit?
Okay.
Ellen, it's your time to shine.
Ooh.
Resolution, so.
We are.
See how you guys want me to vote.
Yes, so the, um, New Hampshire School Board Association is having their delegate assembly, uh, next Saturday. Um, and Ellen is our delegate, so she will take all of our votes and vote as if she were all of us.
Vote as one.
Please make a suggestion, there's a lot of them, so being as clear as possible in your motions will be helpful. And if you would motion in the affirmative, and then, so if you're not going to support something, then you would vote no. Or if you are going to support it, you would vote yes. If you're, there are some instances where the school board association, um, has alternate language. So when you make your motion, you'll wanna be sure to, to say, I'm, I would make a motion to approve alternative language submitted by the school board or I'm supporting the original that was submitted by the local school checks. And I will be really clear for Ellen to know exactly what she's voting on Saturday. So how do you wanna do it?
Um, does everyone start on number eight?
Yeah, but, yes, okay, yes, it's supposed to, yeah. Okay, we're just continuing resolutions. So I, I, you know, sometimes we read, um, the recommendation from school board association. Unless everyone's had time to do that, you can, if you're ready to vote, you can just vote to indicate how you.
Do we need to read the proposed resolution aloud?
No.
Okay.
If you've all read them.
Are people prepared?
Okay.
We need to get the summary and get more to what it's about.
Yeah. Nate, do you know anything about this one?
Yeah, I, I, I do and I have my own opinion about it, but I, but I, so, yeah, what are you asking?
I just didn't know if you had any special insight into, into the purpose or what, what the goal was.
Well, there's the, yeah, so the purpose of, the purpose of this, of this resolution or the proposed resolution from the New Hampshire School Board is to effectively, um, re-declare, re-establish, uh, global control in light of recent legislation of the state by all it seems to be trying to inherently pull away global control funding of the school board dictating what can, can be done for that. Beyond typical like standard level language, which is what this board education's job has been, been, they have done for quite some time. Um, so I totally agree with the, the proposed resolution, but at the same time, I think that the, you know, in terms of what the role of the NHSBA is.
Right.
As representing all school boards, all districts that are members in the state legislature is really, having been, having been through this, this, this experience that everyone's gonna have, I believe, it is, it's idle just to sort of see this, right, and diversity of the school board, not the state. Each representing their locally elected body, you know, and it's, it's wild to try to picture what is a statewide resolution. So I don't wanna make this first motion because I feel, I agree with Bygriff both ways. I'm gonna defer, I'm gonna let somebody else make the motion, but, uh, I can see the way it's going.
Well, I feel like in readings, people can agree like they don't support because they feel like this is too broad reaching and really not what they should be dealing with. It should really be more about locally dressed community, uh, school board decisions on this. So, I mean.
Yeah, but the, 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 the.
But then what's being done? I know, that's, that's what I wrote down, I said, what's being done?
State child of global controls being positive in education, and that's all these years and they're systematically trying to, yeah, dismember it, just.
To get rid of it, right?
Yeah.
Which is the reason why this is here, yeah.
The current legislature is trying to dismember it.
Right. So.
So I move to support, uh, the resolution.
I will second.
Because every, every motion's gonna be supported anyway, so.
So this would be one where even though they don't support it, we would disagree and we support the resolution.
Yes, of course. Yeah, I'm, I'm just, yeah, so.
Yeah, every, every motion, every motion's going to be to support, that we can either.
Or not.
Right, but the motion's in the same.
Okay, so two motions to support. Is there any other discussion? Yeah, I mean, I think the rationale listed here is pretty specific and I think something we're all concerned about.
Yeah.
I don't suspect that it's gonna go very far on the committee, but.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to see.
But I, I would agree that I, I support that experience.
Yeah, I mean, I think especially in a climate where teachers don't necessarily feel supported.
Right.
And are threatened with civil lawsuits, I think. It is, it would be a good thing if we could do it. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Doki. This double side is throwing me out. Number nine, the proposed resolution is affirming the qualification of school librarians to research and select appropriate digital material for school libraries. Uh, the New Hampshire School Board Association has supported other alternative language. So, um.
I'm, I'm just gonna say I like the language because it's, it makes it, it's not just libraries.
What language?
The proposed.
Well, the language opens it up to, um, other people being able to use it globally. So you could use it in your classrooms, not just libraries.
I'm, I'm gonna move to support Dover's resolution.
I second.
The alternate?
No.
Okay.
I'm moving the original one.
Oh, okay, I like the alternate one.
Okay.
All right, all right, so which one was it? I, I, I was, I moved the Dover one.
Do people, yeah.
No, that's fine.
I will second it, the motion, um, and then we can discuss.
Ellen, are you pleased?
No, 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 I, I misunderstood, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I will, I will do a better job of telling you. Nate and Kendra. Um.
Can I speak to?
Please, yes.
So I think that, I think that, that their, their proposed alternative resolution, uh, by the NHSBA, by withdrawing the core of Dover's concern, makes it such a planned statement that it's kind of like, we already do this stuff. It's, it's sort of like it, it takes any, any point away from having this resolution. So I think if we're gonna go with the proposed, then I, I definitely would have it. But I think with the alternate, with the proposed coming from Dover, their point is that they're trying to say that a number of people in our school are and are becoming and are prioritizing, uh, valuing, emphasizing DEIJ, like ethnic, political, religious, cultural values around, around the world in our schools, and I, I think that's exactly the same conversation, conversations that we've been having about DEIJ work across the state. Um, and also, um, that we as a board have, have valued in our, in our policy, if you can come up with a question. I think that's an important statement to say. And I think if you go with the alternate resolution, that's not, doesn't say anything.
You're easy, Sal.
Maybe go back and look at the language more, I think when I was sitting here first, I was thinking of it from a teacher's point of view, but I do agree with you, it's not really much more robust language.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of supporting the proposed resolution from the Dover School Board?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So I move to approve resolution ten.
Second.
Nate?
All right, Zach.
I'm Zach.
Don't know yet.
Zach?
I'm Zach.
Anyhow. Um, this is to include an estimate of actual food service costs for the upcoming year in the preparation of the upcoming default budget. Um, New Hampshire School Association does not support uh this res- this resolution. Um, because I think it's too narrow.
Yeah, I, I agree with the N H S B A, just over, I'll vote against it. I don't think this is worth, this isn't like a, a state level lobbying, you know, concerning.
Yeah, is there like any relevant background here that like?
I would, I would.
What the issue is, or?
I would say the number they plug into their default budget is their number.
Right. Right? I'm, I'm sort of confused about, about their, why they wanted it. I think because of the, the um, un- unpaid lunch balances.
Yeah, I'm sorry, man, that doesn't make sense to you.
Great.
How would Nate on this one, I don't support it.
Yeah, or do I?
Okay, so all in favor of supporting the proposed resolution, number ten?
Nate.
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 Nate. Okay, uh, number twelve, the.
Number eleven.
Stop reading that page.
Where is it? Okay, there we go. See, it's screwing me up.
One state would've fixed all of this.
I know. This is true. Um, this is submitted by the Manana Regional School Board. The proposed resolution is that New Hampshire School Board Association will support any legislation that intends to streamline their recruiting credentially and hiring of certified teachers from the state, from other states. Um, the New Hampshire School Association supports alternate, alternative language. Uh, let me see that.
Yeah, and other licensed school staff from other states. For addition, because I just have teachers, and they added other school staff, licensed school staff from other states.
So I move that we approve the proposed alternative language for a solution.
Second.
Zach and Nate? Okay, discussion?
If you.
Yeah.
If you, oh, I think.
Yeah, it's a, no discussion.
Not sure if it can be done.
It's streamlined, great.
If it's. Oh, wait, what did you move, what did you move, the proposed or the alter?
The alternative.
All, all.
Yes, right.
Now, if they stop targeting teachers with civil suits, we might be able to keep a couple around.
Would this be a problem, I don't know, I'm just asking you, Patty, with this problem, licensed school staff, I imagine that would be like O T S.
Uh, yeah, with, the summit would be people certified by their, the other, their health organizations, so.
So that's not really a problem, so, I mean, because that's, because that reciprocal thing, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, the reciprocity is the issue, coming from other states, and making it easier for people that are coming from other states, which would teach in New Hampshire.
And you would want, you would want it easier, so we would support alternatives, okay, I just wanna make sure that wasn't any kind of thing.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
What, I mean, I only know how credentially works from like, a, a legal perspective, from like my law license. Some states are like very easy to transfer to, others are not, what is the current state of New Hampshire?
Same. Same.
Okay.
Uh, we have reciprocity with some states and not others, and people trying to come, you know, you can come from one state, and then it's like, great, you were certified, and the state come here, you're all set.
Right.
If you're licensed and you're good to go, and then others can throw a lot of them, so, it just, it doesn't make sense that you can teach in one state and not another.
You know, is there reciprocity at least, we, we have reciprocity with the local New England states, or is it like we have with Arizona and Tennessee and Alaska?
No, no, Massachusetts, I think, I mean.
I can't remember which states we have, like, I think we have it with Florida for some reason.
Sure. Yeah, okay.
It's just random, okay.
It, it's no, I'm already.
Same as the, same as the bar.
You know, feeling, feeling is tied to different states, varied levels of standards, and environment's not a trick, you got some issues.
I don't, I just don't know, it's never, in my twenty-five years of doing this, it's never changed, so that makes me think that nobody's going out there and looking into updating teacher prep programs to really.
You just don't, uh. You're only seeing small, like, you're still legacy, they're just.
Who's dealing with this, no one.
It's the same psychology, too.
Is it?
I think it's just like the handshake, like.
Does, does anyone wanna speak to the proposed language versus the alternative language?
I, I just think that if, I mean, if it's having problems again with hiring O T, P T, things like that in school, then it makes sense that the alternative language, because that allows them to hire those people.
So the motion is to support the proposed alternative resolution for number eleven, um, all in support.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
Okay, this is a, no, no, come on, we're on topic again, okay, so. Also, Manana's submitted a bunch of them, so that's also strange, yeah, because they're all Manana. Um, so number twelve is also submitted by the Manana School, Regional School Board. Uh, the proposed resolution will be to support legislation that clarifies responsibility and accountability of parents guardians of students who do not contact themselves according to local laws or school policies.
So I'll move that we approve the proposed alternative, uh, resolution for.
Okay. Does anyone want to second?
Second.
Danielle?
Yeah.
I mean, I think because the rationale, they said that, you know, when they talked to Manana, they agreed that they, that they, so I'm saying.
What is the, the justice, what they, that they're going after?
Truancy. Challenging behaviors.
I mean, like, there's already laws about truancy, there's already work to be done, and other than, like, executing the law, I mean.
I don't know, I don't really know what it means to clarify responsibilities and accountability of parents of the students who are disruptive.
I feel like this came, this comes from the teachers today that are saying, what am I gonna do with parents? This is coming from, I think, it's.
It's.
The whole process of dealing with truancy has changed over time, and it's very difficult. You know, we, we exhaust all of our options and then are left with nothing, we, you know, the parent, the chins, traditions aren't as easy, there's not enough resources to allocate to, you know, address, there's not enough allocation of resources for students who are in harm's way in their houses, never mind the kids that just don't wanna come to school, and parents that are forcing that.
And, and it's putting the responsibility on the legislation.
Right, yeah, and like, I'm not sure what's, what this would look like, in terms of how you can shift the responsibility of raising your children in a way that they will sit still and stand in line and pay attention.
And I'm not, I think, if it was Nate that said it, I'm not sure what clarifying the responsibilities means, because there, there is a truancy law.
Right.
So I'm not sure what.
Yeah.
I think it dies in the legislature, because.
Yeah, that's. Issue.
Dies in the legislature. Dies.
I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with it on principle, but I don't, I don't have high hopes for, for the resolution. Um. Okay, so the motion on the table is to support the alternative language, uh, the alternative resolution for number twelve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I propose we support resolution thirteen, uh, next school board.
I will second, yeah.
Oh, since we did already.
Second Kendra.
Yeah.
Um, any discussion, so I don't, I honestly don't know how it currently works, I assume that, um, the moderators do have that flexibility already, but maybe not.
They haven't had a lot, I think they have more over the last couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah, with COVID, things changed a little bit with COVID too, that there was a more cooperative process. I think, um, instead of, or Secretary of State, right, is in charge of voting?
Yeah.
So this, I think, part of the issue in the rationale talks about cooperative school districts. That they are required to all vote on the same day, so that leaves little flexibility. So it seems like that's where the, maybe the issue was more than, you know, that would be like us saying, it applies to our whole S A U when Pembroke and Allenstown sometimes are completely different snowbells, then you have to feel that, so, so, okay.
Right, right.
I think that's what I understand from reading it.
And there were, I mean, there were a, a lot of towns around us that did not postpone their elections, and had very dismal voter turnout, so. Seems important to me, um, but is there any other discussion? Okay, so the motion on the table is to support, uh, resolution number thirteen, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I support, uh, I'm trying to move to approve resolution fourteen, submitted by Manchester School.
Second.
Uh, any discussion, so this one is to increase funding for building aid, um.
You can't build a building there.
The current, uh.
Fifty million.
Fifty million dollars.
Forty five.
It would've built up a great school.
One and a half.
At least, no one else in the state gets it.
At least less for every other school.
Um. Yeah.
Yes.
You're not gonna fund education, you should at least help fund the buildings for education.
Providing, I think.
Right.
You're right.
You think that's part of an adequate education, but I don't think so. Um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of supporting the proposed resolution number fourteen?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Move to.
Uh, okay, the next one is proposed by the Manchester Board of School Committee, uh. They propose strengthening the language of the continuing resolution to S, advocate for funding for universal pre K, pre K programming and related facility costs.
So.
The New Hampshire School Board Association supports alternative language.
I'll move to approve the alternative language for a solution.
Okay.
Second.
Zach and Danielle? Um, any discussion?
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. Okay, any other discussions? All right, all in favor of supporting the proposed alternative
Aye.
resolution, number fifteen?
Aye.
Aye.
So I move to approve resolution sixteen.
Second.
Okay, this one was submitted by the Manchester Board of School Committee, uh, advocating for state sustainability, incentives, opportunities, and targeted goals for energy efficiency, the expansion of renewable energy, resources for electric school buses, capital funding dedicated to sustainability-related construction, renovation and structure. And the, um, the New Hampshire School Board Association does not support. Uh, they said, well, this may be an important issue for some school boards, the proposal does not necessarily relate to school board governance, or relate directly to education.
I, I, I'm kinda of a, certainly tell you with that, where I think to an extent it does, and having a, a larger voice in Congress would be important for any of the initiatives to really take root.
Yeah, I mean, my sense is that when school boards are charged with building buildings, and putting solar panels on groups of schools, and like engaging in, in those sort of projects, to me, it does seem like it's related to, to our goal.
And for most of the towns in New Hampshire, the school board drives a larger part of the budget than the town.
That's the budget, yeah.
In that regard, it's a larger part of the town, so maybe that, yeah, maybe there should be more, actually, I hadn't thought about that one.
Louder voice.
And when you're doing the right thing, I mean, that's what you're teaching to students, yeah, school, too.
I'll support it.
Just a second.
Good enough.
We have to, okay.
Okay.
Danielle's my ride or die tonight.
Yeah. So the motion on the table is to support the Manchester, or support the proposed resolution number sixteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're all coming down, coming down like the hidden bird.
Yeah. Right. We only have so much control over that, um. So number seventeen, proposed resolution by the Manchester School Board, proposed advocating that Medicaid be used as a primary calculator for free and reduced lunch numbers for New Hampshire school districts. Um, et cetera. The New Hampshire School Board Association supports alternative language. They recommend splitting this into three separate resolutions, I'm not really sure how to vote on that, actually.
I think you have to vote to support all three.
You just support either the alternative resolution, or you vote to reinforce.
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve the alternative resolution for number ten.
Okay.
I'll second it. Sorry, reading, reading.
I'll move it right ahead.
Any discussion? Um, I truthfully am not too knowledgeable about this, um, so don't have, have like a, a real opinion about it.
Exactly, like, when I read it, I just felt like they knew to shatter that this, I don't have a great connection with it.
Yeah, I guess, I was, it's, I was trying to tease out, it seemed like they were talking about two things, that they want the free and reduced lunch tied more to Medicaid, to the Medicaid certification program, but they also said advocate that Medicaid to schools allow greater flexibility to sign off, that's a completely different issue, so.
Well, it's.
You have to have a qualified medical professional sign off on the logs, or to us, for us to submit to Medicaid, so I think they're saying we want that to be the driver for free lunch, or reduced lunch, whatever, and make it easier so that guidance counselors can sign off on, on the logs, indicating that that's a physical service.
Got it. That's my, my interpretation.
How's, how's the free and reduced lunch meal currently?
It's a whole, it's a whole application process, and it's based on income, but it's not tied to the Medicaid to schools program at all.
And it's, I would say, probably highly underutilized.
It's very difficult, you have to have them, you have to have families wanting to fill, apply for it and fill it out, and a lot of families are hesitant to do that. We try as much as we can to get participation.
For the program, isn't it?
But it's not tied to the Medicaid to schools program.
So this, this then would increase the accuracy of those numbers by telling them, like, not making it.
Well, it's gonna sign.
Right.
Well, potentially increase the participation, which would provide food services to more kids.
Right, for if students receive Medicaid, it seems like it's a lot of.
Ultimately, it's the goal, right?
But see, like, I also worry then, is there like a population of kids that whose families don't have Medicaid, but would still qualify for free?
Like, could that process still? I think you still, I think it's still, I think it's still, it would exist, but it's trying to make it easier so that if the student has Medicaid coverage, they would automatically.
Yeah, it says.
It would tie that to much.
Medicaid being just a primary calculator, yeah, so to me, that means the Medicaid numbers, the thresholds for Medicaid, so that sounds like.
Sure.
Um, does anyone have any other discussion on this?
Did we, very, move to the, the alternative?
We, we, the motion on the table is to support the proposed alternative resolution for number seventeen. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm in the comments, I really miss it, wow.
Um. So, do we have to vote on this, if they?
If you were deleting it, okay.
Yes.
Yes, because there's an existing resolution, and they're proposing, the School Board Association is proposing removing it, so you would need to.
So, yeah.
Or be asked.
Okay, um, so the New Hampshire School Board is recommending real, deleting slash removing a resolution, that's number eighteen. Um.
It's kind of like this would.
Should we make a motion? Um, does anyone wanna make a motion to support the removal of resolution, uh, nine, is that nine, D?
That's fine.
Uh, I'll make the motion.
Zach, uh.
To remove it.
Yeah. Second.
I think you would say more than say yeah.
I'm reprocessing.
I know, I read that one a little.
You know, I'll, I'll, this is referred by a lawyer.
We're the worst, I don't know what to tell you. Okay, uh, discussion?
So, I, I think for, for just sort of bookkeeping, cleaning it up, I guess. So I I think for for just sort of bookkeeping, cleaning it up, I guess it makes sense to remove that. Do I, right, do I fully agree with the withdrawal from the national board, I don't know, but I do, but that's not really the question again.
That's how I feel actually too, like, is that a good move?
Do you have any context? Uh I it it's it's your association um. I just I do remember the controversy and that the that the national sent out something that.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to really call it.
Yeah, I don't know. It yeah, they they sent something out on behalf of districts and did not consult their member districts to find out if they supported such a letter and the twenty-four states withdrew their.
Wow.
Oh, membership to the national organization because they were.
And all members. But the what, right, but the the New Hampshire.
New Hampshire withdrew their membership, I don't know if they're still, if it's still withdrawn, so that they want to get rid of the resolution that says they're gonna work with them.
On the federal.
Yeah. Because they don't have a membership anymore.
We don't want to work with that.
I wish I remember the context of the letter.
What's it?
It was about guns and and.
Violence and school threats, yeah.
Violence and and the national board is like, let me do something about this, please.
Why would why would any state withdraw for sending community something about guns and violence in school?
When I.
This is what this is what I'm trying to process.
One of these, I mean, maybe I went to two of them, but the one of these that I went to, it was it was wild, just, I mean, it seems, I know in this town we get a lot of, you know, I I get contact by a number of constituents who talk about uh making a gun-free safe zone, we've been over this for a number of years, but we can't even like. The issue at that year was there was another resolution that was like clearly stating that, I forget what it was, that like federal, under federal gun safe laws pertain to schools. And it's that.
Yeah, there's the state and federal don't agree.
And right, so I don't even know if that's the result yet, and so it was, it was at that year, the discussion was kind of, we have
Yeah.
lobby the legislature to clarify whether guns are allowed in our schools or not, I mean, we couldn't, and and even that discussion at the NHSBA couldn't clearly be settled. So you make, you know, to me, it's a black light, but it's not.
Like, great, yeah. It's not, it's a great deal of controversy over over.
Yeah.
So so I guess my my question in in supporting or not supporting this is did New Hampshire's SBA withdraw over a circumstance that I agree or disagree with of their context.
But they already just, they already canceled their membership with the normal, so now.
Right, no, they they pulled out, right, but they're asking us to support it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But if we don't support this resolution, then that's kind of us saying that we don't agree with what you did.
A message to say, that's true.
Like, did they even ask, did they even ask schools, is that a vote to, you know, they just did it overall, right?
But I don't know the context of what it was for.
No, they just did it.
So they kind of intended, the fact that they didn't do it, right?
They did the same, right.
So I would move that we was not not supporting this.
So that would be.
I think Kendra.
Well, we have to make no affirmative motions.
No. But I I think.
Negative motion. It doesn't exist.
We can't not 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 support.
Negative to get that.
Um okay, so the motion on the table is to support the removal of resolution nine colon D um all in favor? All opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think this is the last one. I think, I have ideas, I'm excited, I can't figure those out. Um. Okay.
Was it that ham sandwich while we were talking about?
Uh okay, number nineteen, submitted by the Cocker School Board, New Hampshire School Board Association will advocate to the New Hampshire State Legislature create a universal and subsidized meal program for New Hampshire public school students.
I wholeheartedly agree with that, I will move to approve article nineteen or resolution nineteen.
I think the first thing that needs to happen though, that it came in after the deadline, so it's gonna require two-thirds of the delegates that are present to allow it to even be considered, so I think you should give down direction.
Just move together.
So.
Sure, I made a motion for us to consider second resolution nineteen.
Uh any discussion? I think it should be considered.
So all fair.
All in favor?
Aye, I will move to approve resolution nineteen.
Second.
Zach and Danielle. Uh any discussion? I agree with the rationale that I believe is critical to ta- tackle childhood hunger and food insecurity.
I.
It's worth for learning.
Pay more than that policy, yeah, and just think about that policy about getting money.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're done. Okay.
With with policies and everything else, we still have to do, is it possible to maybe put the goals to the next meeting?
Most of the policies are pretty, twenty-two, thirty, two, three people.
Yeah.
To put the goals off, might as well, I think, next year.
Yeah, and I and this is the second time we've booked it.
Just get it done, just get it done. Not march, just do it.
True.
Yeah.
It might be easier to march.
Um I would prefer should you just do them now, but. All right, Zach, you are not supportive of that.
I'm just.
Thank you, thank you for the suggestion. Um.
That conquered busts so early.
Okay, so we talked about goals last time, I revised the goals, and I again welcome anyone to again make amendments, suggestions. Um this is certainly not, you know, doesn't have to be the final version, we can make changes and still vote on them tonight, I think.
Um I uh I I did access the video from last week and it was sound quite, it was a little little bit there about this, but I but I jumped over that and cut the sound, it was all, it was all right, yeah. So I did hear the uh I heard the discussion about this um and um I agree with a lot of what was discussed. I I have questions about how many goals we realistically are gonna like, is this until next March, is one of the goals forty simple next year? It's just how many can we add, can we do, so I think it's a good, it's an idea to to have a lot of goals here.
Yeah, that's fair.
Um the I the the question that I wanted to bring in tonight would be one, I don't know, I'm not exactly proposing amendment, but I put something in the drive as a way of looking at item number one. And I noticed that from the conversation last time, that I think we all agree that this, I'm talking, getting back to the D I J uh idea, and I we agree that there is language in the policy A D um and I I obviously agree with that, but at the same time, I'm afraid that if we don't put things into goals with explicit, you know, things we're we're targeting, then then just having a policy can can allow it to sort of settle down in the list of priorities and and I think that if it is a priority of ours to be supporting students recognizing uh tolerance and inclusion and all of that stuff, then I think that's worth um laying out in our in our rules. So I wanted to propose an alternative to goal number one, which I put into the drive, I don't know if the conversation.
Yes, it did.
And I looked at it like.
It's in the packet, I'm not like the last page.
And I looked at it like two.
I have a blank page, but.
Like, I I completely agree with the conversation about how curriculum, math science, not math reading, those are testable data points that we get periodic um updates on, and that's good, that's our job as a board, I think, to hear what's happening and to report that out to the to the community. Um and the triannual uh points for reporting out information, I think, uh blend themselves well to to this goal. But I think I would propose taking that a step further and not separating out D I J as kind of like a separate thing that is addressed in policy A D. I would propose putting it in in similar language, I think if we prioritize it, if we look at the need and we want to make that um you know, a thing that I think we stand on, that there are there are steps we can take, and I would propose that uh the language that I put in there talked about, looking at, like, so for instance, this, we're in the, we're in the middle of this Hispanic American Heritage Month right now, and that to me presents like an opportunity where we could be hearing um what kinds of steps are happening in the school, what kinds of steps are. I know that teachers are doing a lot of these things, but you know, let's let's bring that up and share that with the community, because a lot of the great things that are happening at school, and to be able to share that, I think, would be would be valuable. And it's not just the Hispanic American Heritage Month, it's the uh the AAPI, Asian American Pacific Alliance Month, which there's these periodic events throughout the year which lend themselves to, you know, what's happening, do we, and and how can we support that? We can support that by providing more money to, let's say, the library for for, you know, adding different titles to the to the collection to bring out on the month, or whatever. Or to to support bringing in speakers or other people to, you know, to to uh to, I think it's it's incumbent on us to to to, when we have such a, we don't have a huge amount of diversity in our town, but what we have, we want our students to feel inclusive, feel welcome, feel part of the community. We don't recognize that and celebrate that. I'm afraid that it can be, our school can be viewed as, you know, as not necessarily the best.
It must also prepare them for if they end up in high school, that that's a diversity.
Yeah, I work anywhere else in the world, you know, New Hampshire, well, probably the widest state in the country, I think it is, I don't know, but it, but anywhere else, they're gonna find a lot more diversity than we have here. And I think that's part of our job is to help um help create those opportunities for them to see what. And on that note, I just saw a great permission slip from the eighth grade world cultures class, that was very cool, I don't know, you should just check it out.
I did not, I haven't seen it.
Very cool, you know, give it to you.
Is there any cool stuff happening in the eighth grade world culture class?
The one from the seventh grade class, maybe I can see it.
Yeah, I bet something's always coming out, I don't really. But cool stuff, like, good stuff is happening, and that would be great to like, to let's start talking, to report that. That's working in our D I J direction, I'm glad, I'll get these stuff.
Do you think that we need to um have that as a separate goal, or do you think we can have Principal Willie and Principal Bree present that during their principal report, for instance, like Ken, do you?
I'm afraid that it that A D has been in on the books for five years now.
Yeah.
And I I've had, you know, I feel like there are a couple like places where, but but in the middle of uh Hispanic Heritage Month, thus, you know, like I said, things are happening, but when we walk into the school, I don't see any, you know, any acknowledgement or celebration of it in the library, I don't see, these are places where we could. And I'm sure things are happening, but I'm not sure where those things are, and to be able to 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 say as a goal, we want to get the word out, I think, is a big goal to promote. So I would say we should put it right, that's my that's my opinion, but I hope it obviously to other times.
I would just ask what what your goal is and what your objectives are to achieve it, like, are you? What are you, I guess, what is your plan, you're interested in this topic, and how how does that fit in with what the administration does in school?
Uh exclusively, sure, I would say if it were up to me, I would ask for a principal reporter to be included in the principal's report next month, what kinds of things happen during Hispanic American Heritage Month in the school, and maybe it's like one example. And if that comes with a request for additional funding to increase the the number of titles in the library to help promote, recognize, and celebrate um the diversity of our student body and our faculty.
Yeah, that's I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get to, was action, right.
And and I want to know, sorry, before we put that in the budget, and that's a big decision.
And and I think that was one of the things we talked about last week, there's the board's goals, and it might be like the administrative goals that we have, and they're not necessarily, although they're closely aligned.
Yeah.
Is this is this a goal that we have to for the administration to really?
We built the budget.
Right.
If there's budgeting, that needs to happen, that's on us, so I would like that, maybe that's the goal that I want to, I want to know what I can do to support the budget for next year for increasing.
You want to have a budget line.
Right, I mean, our 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 two primary functions are policy and budget, so we've created policy, but maybe we would have elected to add, I think, the budget side of the equation.
Having periodic reports to let us know how it's going, I think would be important.
Right, so just adding this language to the draft goals, so it's really your tweak is just.
I replicated the exact same thing you had for math and reading, and I just said, let's do some celebrating of diversity in our school at the same time.
Right.
So do you want to put into that wording too um increasing of, you know, creating a budget line for diversity?
I mean, it could be, if that would be a concrete step on our part, but I I don't, I haven't heard anything, and so I don't know if that's needed, maybe the budget line's fine, I just haven't
Right.
had much in the way of information about what exactly we're doing.
You did, I mean, you did write identify yours with word, so that might be something that we identify, then we would be meaningful.
Right, so just be more specific about that that line, I don't want to just say that instead of creating a budget, maybe getting feedback on budgeting and what is being done. Yeah, yeah, one, I would like to clarify, if you want to have triennial presentations or events, do you want a Principal Willie's report, do you want? It, do we want to be like showcasing these things in our communications?
More the better, I don't know, again, I I mean, yeah, I don't really, I don't really want to listen, I don't need to to specify exactly where it comes out, so. But to hear hear about it would be my request, or more about it, I guess, and more more, you know, specific. And requests if there are for the budget.
Yeah.
Do we, are we inviting speakers in to to talk about this, you know, are we are we, when are we special reading?
Sure.
We support that with budget.
I would move to amend the goals to include new language for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only um clarifying is that it does say B one, create schedule for triennial presentations, so is that something that we want? Do we want triennial presentations, do we want um something more broad than that, so we can figure out what we want? You know what I mean?
I can't, I can't read one in just three months that are specific, if if that's the metric or the one that the benchmark will look at, right, would be one of these months, there's one three months.
Right.
But those presentations could be the presentations of the board.
Yeah.
So once a, once three times a year, we just have an update as to what what's going on.
Be done on this policy.
Yeah.
I think presentation is different than this is when they reporting out some examples of what's what's happening.
Report, yeah.
Right.
So monthly report or at least three times a year, you know, at least three times a year.
Right. Some sort of presentation.
Hear an update from things that have been done.
Yeah.
Create schedule for. Report.
I mean, this is the first time it's gonna be a goal, so if it's not enough, it can always be written up for next year.
Um so I just, like, my um edit that I just done on my pages, create schedule for updates slash reports regarding diversity recognition.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll move that language.
You'll move the amendment to the amendment.
The update, the update, the update amendment.
All right.
Okay. Uh any discussion?
Uh on the update or on the overall document?
Uh yeah.
This is adding your language as is mandated.
Okay, so we're voting on the medley right now. Yes, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I got lost, I heard when Zach first moved it, and I didn't hear anybody second that second.
I said.
Who did second?
It it wasn't Zach about the first time around, it's right.
And then she both did the second one as well.
You didn't second the first one.
Oh, nobody seconded the first one.
It died, it died.
I said.
All people the ones dying, mate.
So that was the second second.
It left me out to dry.
Okay.
Okay.
They left, they hooked me out on the first one.
So this is just a motion about the amendment, the change to this amendment.
Changes.
To that.
Okay, any discussion?
For the whole thing.
Just for the.
Just for the motion.
I'm the language.
Zach can do the yes.
Are you guys, I'm what I was thinking twenty minutes ago.
Okay, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Okay, so now.
So I move, I would move that we approve the district goals.
Okay.
Second.
Um discussion, do we think this is too many things to have as goals? I think it's a worthy discussion. So it's four, well, it's four, but with multiple subparts.
We've had more, we've had less.
Okay.
I think it's a, I think it's good.
Some of them are obvious, I mean, the high school options, we won't have a choice about. Building facilities, we really also don't have a choice about, so those are obvious, so one in four would be sort of new work that we're doing, which I think seems brand reasonable. Um okay, anyone else have any discussion?
Do we, I guess this is the only, but for number four, do we have talks about how, what are some steps we can take on that one?
I start Danielle.
Search.
I start search.
All right, really, great.
Um okay, so all in favor of the goals as revised?
Aye.
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 We're done, did you get the revision to Ashley?
I will, thanks.
That's in here, okay. Order boards, so I will go quickly. Um, exec board, uh, we have moved the budget to the full board. Um, so the full board meeting is next Wednesday. I believe the budget will be in the shared drive in advance of the meeting. For Ellen and Danielle, who have probably not come through an SAU or district budget, I would recommend looking at it for a little while before the meeting.
Call them with questions.
Yes, call one of the learned hands with questions. I am not one of those, call Zach. Um, um, there, you know, when you open it, it will seem very overwhelming. Um, and I will say for the, for the people who have seen it before, there is new software this year to create the budget. So it's, it looks fairly similar, but like the notes, so, you know, items will have notes under the budget line. Those will be down very far. So I'm just giving that as a warning, because when you look at it, the note is like much farther down. So if you're looking for an explanation, just look to off to the next line, basically. Um, so there will usually be like what the past few years budgets were, what the actual expenses were, and what the proposed budget is. And then there will be notes saying, you know, if there was a specific increase or, you know, why they're sort of justifying that. Um, but I would look at that, and if you can come to the full board meeting, we need a quorum, so.
So is, is the full board meeting is, we just hope everybody comes.
Please come. Well, it's, we have to cancel meetings if we don't get a quorum, so we need at least twelve people. Today we had eight. They sent out an email, I don't know, I guess.
I saw, yeah, I saw, I just didn't, I didn't really know what.
Yes, so the, so the SAU, so I actually give a little bit of context. So the SAU has their own budget. Um, for salaries, like superintendents, some administrative staff, um, you know, shared services between the schools and a bunch of other things. But so there's that budget that we have, that has to be approved by the entire SAU board. So the exec board has already looked at it, has made changes as necessary, and then has presented it, is presenting it to the full board, has moved to to present to the full board.
Timing is such because that one has to get established, and then essentially broken into hot pieces and worked on by our budget. One line in our budget is the SAU portion that we are responsible for.
Yes, so each school has designated portion based on assessments within the school district, and how many students and.
The towns are probably.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's all brought up. Um, so yeah, so there's that budget, it will, I imagine it is confusing if this is your first budget discussion ever. Um, but if you want to call me, I can walk you through it.
Let's do a presentation.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Jess will talk about the fund budgets, and then I'm happy also afterwards, if any, for anyone that wants a one-on-one, I'm happy to go through with you, or I'm not sure you understand.
There are different funds, which I just learned at, being on the exec board. Yes, we'll go through it all, don't worry.
Yeah.
So they'll say, fund one on line seven, and you're like, what's happening?
Yeah.
Um, but, yes, so it's, it's interesting, it's not as long as our budget, I don't think.
No, it's just different.
It's just different.
And that meeting usually doesn't last an hour or even two.
Yes.
It's the exec board that don't work, because the board's already done all the work.
And it's not six, that's not.
Yep. Um, other than that, we got the audit update, but you've already shared that, so I don't think there was.
Yeah, I'll see if there's anything new for the next week for the audits, but I don't think so, because I know they're there the next two weeks.
Do I have you on?
Uh, no.
Okay. Principal's report.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a PTO member here, do you want?
Oh, do you wanna go?
Yeah, you don't always have one, you usually have it, but you didn't, I saw, I didn't know she.
Would you like to do a report?
All I have to say is, um, please pray it doesn't rain and come to the yard sale.
Excellent, will do.
It's happening, rain or shine, so bring an umbrella, just in case.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, right, so this principal's report covers September seventh um through October fourth. Um, on Thursday, next September seventh, we had our first fire drill, you know, the month that we have to have a uh drill of some sort. Uh, it was our first drill of the new system, and uh we we did a report afterwards about whether people could hear it or not hear it. It was really one of the calmest fire drills we've had, the, it's this, uh, the updated one just says, there's an emergency, go there, out. Everybody gather around, get out. It's like, okay, that's.
Very pleasant.
As opposed to kid walking down the hallway. So, um.
Can it be your voice?
That was a lot of ice, that was ice and water.
If you're willing, Zach.
That would be great.
Um, our soccer volleyball and cross-country teams are um in full swing of their season. And uh we try to give a daily or a report at each morning announcements, and they're, um, the girls' soccer team is doing very well, the boys' soccer team is trying very hard. The volleyball team is doing very well, and cross-country always has uh top runners here, so. Um, on Wednesday, September thirteenth, Jess Bickford, who is, you know, is the assistant superintendent of student services at the SAU, attended our professional development Wednesday staff meeting and did a quick training on five oh fours and Title IX, and uh it was like a whirlwind, bully, it was a whirlwind of all the things that you need to do at the beginning of the year.
Bully. Yeah.
So, um, that was very helpful, she did that with the whole staff. Um, we asked her us to stay for, or non-certified staff as well, to stay for the for the training. If they weren't able to, she came back the following week and met in the morning with another small group of people. So everyone has that, has received that training. On September fifteenth, um, which was a Friday, our fifth graders took their first field trip to a tuckaway. Um, we had, also had a staph flu clinic that day, and the PTO provided the most delicious breakfast cart. You know, our staff always appreciates that, so thank you to all the community members who donated and um our PTO pair uh families that that participated in that day. On Monday, September eighteenth, we had our middle school community meeting in the evening. Um, it was very well attended by sixth, seventh and eighth grade parents, we met with sixth grade parents in the cafeteria. Brian and I did a presentation, this is their introduction to middle school. Um, we did try to have it, last year we had it early on in September, but we really would not coordinate a date until mid-September. So it all worked out fine, um, and then the sixth grade team also met with the parents um and did their presentation. Seventh grade met in the library with their seventh grade parents and did a pre-presentation of the whole thing, seventh grade. And then the eighth grade team met in the um, in Mr. Colleyhead's science room. And all of the slide decks that were presented for sixth, seventh and eighth grade, we'll, I combined them all and put them together into one, and that's available on the website. They also emailed it to all of our um middle school families, so that they would have that. Um, on Thursday, September twenty first, uh, we had our first mentor-mentee meeting. We have, I think, six first-year teachers that are participating in the mentor program. And we have um eight year-two mentees that are participating in year two. Um, we did something a little more creative this year with our year-two mentees. Uh, we didn't have enough money, and this is, mentor program is a grant-funded program, and we didn't have enough grant money to give them year two, which is typically what Deerfield does. Oftentimes, we only give them three years in a mentor-mentee relationship program. Um, so we decided to um do a year-two mentee program, grant-funded, and we're paying the mentees, the second, the year-two teachers to actually stay after school on that one Thursday a month. And they get paid a site met for staying for that hour, and administration is covering different topics. Um, this particular um month, we covered uh how to get certified, all things um MLP, which is the portal we use for getting certified, and talked about our evaluation system, um, the thoughtful classroom. There's four cornerstone, so we talked about the cornerstone one. So it was uh well-attended, and we had a great conversation. On Friday, September se- twenty, September twenty-second, our seventh graders took their first field trip to Mount Major. Um, we also had our first all-school meeting, the eighth graders were hosts, they literally could have run this, the show, I didn't even have to be up there. Um, they planned everything from the greeting to the group activity that we did for the whole school, and it was a lot of fun. Um, on Sunday, September twenty-fourth, uh, I wanted to give shout-out to the Anne Burgham Nursery uh for their generous plant donation to our school. Uh, and the third-grade team and families came to school that day, uh, after the Sunday, volunteered, um, prepared the back, um, the playground area, the steps leading up to the, to the fields, um, did some digging up, and we're, uh, the third-grade team is, the students are gonna work with the live it green magnet and do all the planting. Uh, Crispac plants, I think, are the ones that were being donated, I don't know any of them, so. Um, I guess they're hardy, and they are grounded, and they will help with erosion, and I'm, the third graders can tell you all about it. Um, uh, congratulations to our band and chorus, they did their opening, the Deerfield Fair opening ceremonies um on Thursday, and did a wonderful job. Uh, our art team, Mrs. Chase and Miss Pam, our new art teacher, uh, set up the Deerfield Fair projects. It's always a sight to see, especially that marvelous dragon who apparently has a dead job to do. Um, she was looking mighty white, it was teeth. Uh, so it was a marvelous display, and I hope everyone had fun at the fair. Um, upcoming tomorrow, uh, is our advisory day for our new, um, we know a lot about advisory day, so this particular day is set, we do three times a year. Um, is set aside at the, especially at the beginning of the year for our sixth, seventh and eighth grade advisor, advisories, to take a field trip together, it's a team-building activity. Um, most of them are learning about their advisories tomorrow, Magnet is.
Forty-seven.
Has Magnet's established.
Right.
Um, so this is the first big advise, uh, day they take, and they spend the day with their, with their particular advisor and our advisor. Uh, sixth grade's going to be Chil Farm, seventh grade's going to DeMarik Hill Farm, and eighth grade is going to the Works. Um, and then on Friday, as you know, there is no school for students, it's a professional day for for all staff. Uh, we will be working on our curriculum committees, uh, we're doing a lot of work on alignment and scope, spoken sequence, specifically in math and ELA. Uh, we're also doing some social studies curriculum work, um, that needs to be done. Uh, our art, library, music and wellness curriculums, are finalizing their curriculum plan for CRB and the school board, so we, you're gonna have four curriculums in this frame. Um, for our new folks, our curriculum is on a seven-year cycle, so uh this, last year we didn't have any, and this year we have four. So, um, they'll have a good chunk of that time on Friday to work on their curriculums as well. We have some, a smattering of other things happening, our tier-two, three team will meet, there's Medicaid training for some uh of our teachers. Some of our parents are going to attend the um NEA, which is the uh, the, the Ed, the National Education Association for New Hampshire, always holds a fall instructional conference, and so a few of our parents will be um going there, I think it's in, uh, I think it's about this year. Um, and then we're gonna have a Croctober potluck lunch, so that will be exciting. And then on Monday, uh, the ninth, there's no school for Columbus Day, um, or. Reference it, so that's it, thank you.
My ass, please.
Please. So we have, as you know, we have a new curriculum director for the SAU, for the entire SAU all schools. So I just wanted to give a shout-out, because she came to me today, this afternoon, and said, I love going to Deerfield. And she said that she met with math specialists, and they wanted her help and asked her to come, and she sat down with them, and she said, you guys are like ahead of the entire SAU. And they said, I know, but we wanna do this, and we wanna do this, and she was so impressed, and I just thought that we needed to hear that.
Thank you, and she also came, worked with uh uh Lindsay Maxfield on social studies, so she helped Lindsay on all that work.
Okay, so good.
So she's been very, Amy Parkinson has been very helpful, very um responsive to our meetings, and it's been, it's been great to have her.
She's impressed with Deerfield, so. I will also add that.
Has nothing to do with me, all of them.
I uh was one of the judges in the art building, and it was very fun to see all of the blue and artwork.
Oh, yeah.
And if others are interested in judging, I think art buildings, you're looking at.
Yeah.
It's very fun.
I bet it is.
Yeah.
I think she's so proud of it, yeah, so I was in the school a little, a little bit when I went to the fair, it's so fun to see.
Very cute. Yeah. It's so fun, yeah.
Oh, my project's over here, over here, over here, and of course, it's not, you know, it's totally homeless, right?
Yes, so. It's unfortunate that we can't give blue room and staff room.
I know.
But there is a financial piece, so we would bankrupt the people at the fair. And we gave everyone blue, but it was very fun, and if people are interested, I'll hook it up. Um, okay, curriculum review board. Okay.
Um, yeah, my first meeting, I, is October twenty-third, um.
So that's October twenty-third, that would be a Wednesday?
It's a Monday. We said, we always have.
It's always on Monday, okay, and it's right after school, right?
Correct, three o'clock, yeah. I have one more thing, I'm so sorry. Um, I don't think I printed off, I just saw the enrollment um sheet in the drive, so I'm sorry, Zach, I'll have a paper copy for you. Uh, but I will get one to you. Uh, so our enrollment numbers, uh, we are including preschool, we have thirty-six preschoolers, forty kindergarteners, it's a.
It's the October first.
Say that again?
It's the October first.
It's October first, yeah. Yep, um, forty kindergarteners, fifty-three first graders, forty-eight second graders, fifty-four third graders, fifty-one fourth graders, uh, fifty-four fifth graders, and then our middle school has total one hundred sixty-one, broken down fifty-eight for sixth, fifty-seven for seventh, and a small class forty-six for eighth, uh, for a total of four hundred ninety-seven.
And that includes preschool?
Including preschool, which I'm, I guess that is thirty-six.
Okay, great. Um, municipal budget committee uh had their first sort of kickoff meeting last night. I attended in Zach's place. Um, it was just general sort of discussion about the season. Um, I had, as we discussed last meeting, shared an email with an MBC with our proposed timeline, laying out what would we expect to review the budget, and when we start to get it sent. They seemed totally fine with that timeline, they were happy with it. Um, and all seemed well. The, I think the uh town budget, they anticipate maybe in three weeks. So, um, nothing really is going on with MBC quite yet, but it is on the way. Um, yeah, policies. Um, I would love to get these first two off this agenda. Um, so I did, as you requested, but make sure you can see the red lines and know exactly which ones you were voting on. So, um, we did get input, we worked on these at leadership, so they should be all set.
Uh, I'll move the JLCF.
Are you skipping your emails over?
Okay, go down, go down, go down. EFAA.
I was gonna go the other one, okay, well, sure, I'll move EFAA.
Uh, I will second, thanking Kendra. Uh, any discussion?
I still have one question, it's on the first page of the fourth paragraph. It just said, um, like online, maybe they crossed off the vendor, they said.
Oh, we switched. Oh, we crossed up my school bucks.
Yeah, and it just, the way it was written, it didn't say who the vendor was or how they could use my school bucks.
Yeah, that's the new one.
K one two.
Oh, yeah, you know why, because I think the sample had different vendors, and I think it just got all crossed out instead of leaving our vendor.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you.
That's what I thought, I did.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, that is ours. It's all good, fine, everything's fine. Um, okay, any other discussion on EFAA? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, JLCF Wellness.
I'll move it.
I will second, Nate and Kendra. Uh, any discussion?
The only thing I just wanna mention is, I would love to see a report of this, I know they talk a lot about collective data.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Um, everything else is first reading, I will say I don't think all of them are uploaded into the drive. So I think.
If they are, they just weren't in the folder. What, I mean, when I searched for them, I found them.
But they were in the, to make folder.
Oh.
They are probably the different folder.
Different folder.
Yeah.
They were in the policy.
I'll make sure, I made a note of that. Um, and these are all first readings, and these came out of the most recent legislative update that we received from the School Board Association. Got it, and they're redoing their website, so we had to submit a spreadsheet.
And they're redoing their website, so we had to submit a spreadsheet of everybody that wanted access to the new policy, I'm not sure when they're, I think November, maybe. Um, so in this first update, they did actually send out the policies to us, because they, they were redoing their site.
Okay. Um, so we'll move all of those to secondary?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that, or no?
Nope.
Okay. Sounds good, informational items?
I don't remember if I gave you, did I give you your ending balance last time? Alfred goes in the books, I can't remember if I gave that to you or not.
I don't think so.
I'm still waiting to.
Yeah, like, no, I thought.
Yeah, like, maybe I thought.
I think we have signed the man, I've sent them.
Yes, so, um, you, your fund balance to start was by fifty-nine sixty-six. You had three hundred thousand dollars in warrant, um, articles, and then your retainage, you voted to retain up to is the max. So what was left was two hundred fifty thousand dollars, nine sixty-six, sixty, so that goes into your retain. Um, so we are close.
So there's no fund balance going back to the tax rate.
Nothing, no. And you, we need to watch this carefully, because you'll have, you did put a hundred thousand dollars into the special interest, I think it was a hundred.
Yeah.
Um, and then you've got two hundred and fifty in retainage, so we literally have three hundred fifty thousand dollars to kind of, I'll say, play with. Um, so we need to carefully watch.
And you still have the budgets frozen for all the kinds of programs?
Yes, and Amber thought we would have enough updated numbers to do a surplus report, um, in November. So I'm telling her, as soon as we, it's hard, I mean, you know, you know, a lot of bills haven't even come yet, so it's a guessing game at this point, but we have to watch it very carefully. Um, this is not on the agenda, so maybe not appropriate, but I'm just gonna ask, um, did we get updated numbers regarding adequacy aid?
Yes.
Do we have a significant change adequacy?
Um, I mean, Amber usually does a sheet comparing, and she didn't give it to me yet.
Yeah. The only reason I ask is because I did one of the New York School Association trainings, and they were saying that
I'll give you a note of it.
Yeah.
this year they, the adequacy aid was increased, so that if you wanted to spend it, you had to hold a public, you have a special meeting.
Yeah.
It's a special meeting in order to spend that additional adequacy aid for this year.
Yeah.
We may.
For the current.
I don't think that it was enough for you.
I would say it was like eighty thousand dollars.
It wasn't enough to have like a special dis- meeting to, you know, you have to, you have to do that in order to add it to your appropriations, because right now it comes in as revenue. And I don't know that it's gonna be.
Yes. Okay.
But I haven't got the sheet yet, oh, sure.
Yeah, so I was, and just, I was texting Patty furiously one day at, at lunch, I was like. Saying, oh, I'm telling you, adequacy. Um, because there was like a very specific process and a timeline, I think that was this fall, that if you wanted to move it to use this year, there had to be a public.
We don't need it this year, we need it.
Right.
We don't need it the year we're referencing right now. We need it in the current budget, where it's just revenue.
Where, where we're gonna end this year.
Right, so we don't need to move it in the last year's budget, we need it, we need it as revenue this year.
But I think it is for this year, isn't it? The adequacy aid was improved for this year.
The, uh, those I thought were the estimates, and then they revised the estimates. I'll, I'll check with Amber.
Yeah, she usually does this bridge, I think that's what it was.
And I'll make a difference. Okay. I don't have.
So that you know what to put in year. Got it.
Right.
Okay. Um, the only other thing that I will add from informational is that I don't believe it is the purview of the board to de- decide Halloween costumes, so we'll leave that to the administration, just to clarify. Um, back to public comments.
Earl Rhodes, Trick Street. Um, quick question, um, the audits, glad to see that they're finally getting someplace. Have you figured out why it was delayed, and what are you gonna do to avoid that in the future? Uh, I'm, you know, no answer needed, it's a big process, and it's, uh, it's, uh, you know, I'm sure you have spent time and effort to, to, to get your hands around that, but, uh, I talked to the head of the municipal bond bank today, and she reminded me that she was keeping an eye on SAU fifty-three. Yeah.
First of all?
Yeah, yeah, I understand, so, um, I guess if, if, if the town ever goes wrong, I think there's school questions on bond process there as well. So if there's a, I don't think, I don't think it reaches over, but I, I think, you know, it's, it colors it slightly. Um, I'm glad you mentioned the NBC, uh, meeting. Those of you who were at the August first, uh, training that the, MB, that the New Hampshire Municipal Association, uh, gave, uh, would probably have come away with the thought that frugality and cooperation were two of the important things that, that, uh, they, that are part of the NBC's role, and, and, and the RSA's roles, I guess. Um, so I was, uh, reflecting on that and listening to what you were saying this evening. In terms of the energy side of things, um, I think you were invited to come talk to the Energy Committee about, uh, uh, things that we've been talking about, and I guess this evening I saw a private individual's recommendations going to your facilities guys, chosen not to speak to the Energy Committee, so I just wanted to note that, that is a cooperation issue. Um, in terms of, I, I, you, you were absolutely right in anticipating public comment about, um, about the meeting thing, uh, about, I guess, audiovisual, really. Um, and I guess I, I think of it in a different context, I think that you all, um, are doing a much better job in listening to your customers this year than you, you were in the past. I think despite some noise of frustration, um, that's, uh, you know, your, your progress is commendable and, and working well. So far, I suspect it's gonna be a happier result, and may have happened in the past. Um, but, um, in terms of listening to your bankers, it doesn't seem like it's going so well. Unlike, uh, I mean, every, every business has to listen to its customers and to its bankers, and to bankers, the people of, of the town, uh, of Deerfield. Um, and so when I hear the conversation about the, uh, the audiovisual thing, um, I couldn't help but conclude.
Unfortunately, we do have to cut off in three minutes, just for fairness of other.
I'll be happy to wait for somebody else to speak before speaking, yeah. Anybody else?
Is anyone else up for the comments?
Just, I'll wrap it up quickly.
Okay.
Um, that, um, from a cost perspective, uh, Tim Griffin system is already in place at the town offices. There's no timing conflict, as far as I can see, Wednesday nights are, your Wednesday nights are, are open, as far as I'm aware. I go to a lot of these meetings, and there doesn't seem to be a conflict for me in attending these, so probably would work out well. Uh, so I guess I was sort of ending up thinking that you were choosing, uh, a higher cost, a lower quality of audiovisual, and frankly, your convenience. Uh, you know, there's not a lot of coming and going here, except for copies, I've seen that a bunch of times. Uh, and, and not choosing a lower cost, a higher quality audiovisual, and, uh, engagement, which I think is part of the civic duty of this to encourage, uh, citizen engagement and to talk to the people who, who fund you. So I found that a little bit disappointing, but I'm sure you'll, you'll consider something of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay. I will make a motion to go to non-public session pursuant to NHRS A ninety-one dash three, section two, small letter K. Okay, roll call?
Yes.
Yes.